I call the order of the January 14, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Board of Education, Hinsdale Township High School District 86. We are meeting in the Hinsdale South High School Library. The time is 5:05 PM. In light of mitigation plans to in fact do Page County with limits in person gatherings to 10 persons or fewer, individuals and committee members have the option to participate in board meetings virtually. Some Board of Education members are participating in tonight's meeting in person while others are taking part virtually. Madam Secretary, please call the roll, and if you're participating virtually, please identify for the secretary that you're virtual.
Member Camden.
Here.
Member Cheval.
Here.
Member Hurstman?
Here, virtually.
Member Edwards?
Here.
Member Hanson?
Here, virtually.
Member Ho?
Here.
Member Turk?
Here. We have coram, the board can proceed. The board will adjourn to closed session to discuss appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees. Chair and entertain, we adjourn to close for discussion of the exceptions noted.
Motion, second.
Motion, Cheval, second by Hall. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Member Camden.
Aye.
Member Cheval.
Aye.
Member Hurstman?
Aye.
Member Edwards?
Aye.
Member Hanson?
Aye.
Member Ho?
Aye.
Member Turk?
Aye. Ayes have it, motion carries seven zero. The board meeting will resume an open session at approximately six o'clock PM. The board will take action following the closed session. Time is now six o'clock PM, and the board now reconvenes an open session of the January 14, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Please stand if you are able and join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance...
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, folks, Happy New Year. Before we move to good news, Chair and entertain a request by the Chair, if such a thing is appropriate, to move audience communication up to after good news. Any objections?
No.
Hearing none, we will move it up. At this point, we'll turn it over to Principals McCorney and Walsh for good news.
Thank you very much, President Camden. On behalf of Hinsdale Central, I just had one, well, we have multiple good news that's going on, but I wanted to communicate one in particular. I wanted to congratulate Junior Shivani Ro as she was selected to present at the American Society of Hematology Annual Meeting and Exposition back in December of 2020. The focus of her presentation was on a study about blood types and COVID-19 severity that she conducted with Dr. Shivi Jain from Rush University Medical Center. Shivani had participated in our SERVE program at Hinsdale Central, and through her mentorship with Dr. Jain, she had this opportunity to present at a American Society of Hematology Annual Meeting, an exposition back in December. It is a huge honor for a high school student to have such research highlight and disavow. I just wanted to congratulate Shivani for all the work she did, and her teachers who helped guide her along the way.
That's outstanding. On behalf of the board, we extend our congratulations. That's some pretty heavyweight research at the high school level. Not that I don't think our folks can do it, but that's pretty doggone impressive, so congratulations and thank you.
At Hinsdale South, we just wanted to take a minute to just formally congratulate their speech team on all the progress they've made. They typically are a group that we really enjoy celebrating, and this year is no different. They recently took fifth place in the Len Bar West Theatre Competition, which is considered to be one of the toughest competition areas. So I just wanted to congratulate our speech team and look forward to speaking about them again and their continued success.
Thank you. At this point, Madam Secretary, we will move to audience communication. As my understanding, we have one online submission. Add, to my eyes, even with the aid of correct division, I don't see any in-person commenters, so could you please read the one received email?
Yep, we have one audience communication from Molly Watke of Hinsdale, and she is addressing return to school questions. "Good evening. The state of Illinois has recently announced K-12 teachers and staff members will be in Group 1B for COVID-19 vaccines. How will this immediately impact the return to in-person instruction? Can you also clarify how District 86 calculates a 50% return to school when 45% of the student population remains remote? A 50% return should allow all students comfortable with in-person instruction for days of in-school attendance every week."
So it's my understanding that we addressed during the strategic, pardon me, the COVID update. For what it's worth, from the Chair's perspective, we have a lot of folks in DuPage County that fall into the 1B as an employee category, which includes educators, and it's going to be a long slide before we get those folks vaccinated. Tammy's looking at me like I'm crazy.
Okay.
Yeah, Tammy will go into more depth with this, but I, it'll be, I don't really have much of a present report, so might as well get that out of the way too, because I know Marty's in a hurry to get out of here. The reality is, this is going to be a long march, folks, and it's not a political statement, but it's going to take a while. It's not going to be done quickly, and we need to be very methodical and very strategic in how we're looking at things. So I think, Ms. Watke, your question will be answered during the context of the report. At this point, we'll move to 5.1, the strategic plan goal updates, and we'll turn it over to Superintendent.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to present this, agenda item has actually been moved several times due to the pandemic, and so it's a combination of looking back to all the accomplishments of last year. Here's you're going to hear from different goal champions of just super high-level highlights, and also the initiatives that we've been working on this year and continue to look on. So with that, just, just as a reminder for the community, we have our five main goal areas. You look here for each goal champion tonight, in addition to our principals weighing in on some of the wonderful work that we've been making on this five-year strategic plan. Excellent. In particular, if you recall, a couple of times we've discussed this at the board meeting, this summer we created and established the district cultural equity leadership team. Their kickoff meeting was in July. It is representative of students, parents, staff, teachers, administration, Board of Education members, and external facilitators. We have three board members that are part of CELT, there's Board Member Camden, Board Member Hanson, and Board Member Edwards. There's approximately about 53 of us, and we are all able to be present. We've been meeting virtually. One of the primary foundations is anytime you start something is to understand and create that mission statement and vision, and what, who is it that we want to be, and what is our responsibility. This is new territory for District 86. We have, in the past, not had this type of district-wide group, so we are very excited to move forward with this. We met again yesterday, the CELT team, and finalized our fifth equity statement, and at this time tonight, before we launch into the goal updates, we would like to present to the full board and the community our equity statement. So with that, Mr. Buckle, can you confirm that we have our...
So there's one missing. She was having a problem getting on. We do have Alexandra Collins, Elizabeth Greve, Henry Minnendoo, and Robin Vanoy, and Reva Burma.
And do you show staff numbers, any other...
We know Chris is here, we see Chris at that.
There's other some teachers from CELT. Did you show them what else on?
Hey, Josh.
Steven Moore's on. He just popped on.
Mr. Buckle, the individual on the other side of the plot are unable to hear you.
Oh. Hey, I have Steven Moore here now. Let me go through the whole list. Okay, there's Steven. I have Alexandra Collins, Elizabeth Greve, Henry Minnendoo, Reva Burma, and Robin Vanoy.
Chris is here, Josh is here. Do we have Billson online?
I don't see Billson online.
Do you see Kate?
She was having a problem getting on. Deb's working on it now.
Okay.
I do see Billson in the document, so I'm not sure why he's not online, I can check him.
As far as finalizing the technical piece, I'll just provide a little bit of context from the full board before we present the content. And so part of the process of creating the equity statement, in the large group, we would present direct for the group to comment on and react to and add to. We would do this in small breakout rooms, and then myself, the building principals, Chris Jess Colka, and our two external facilitators, we're still the editing team, commenting on all that feedback. And we have three iterations of that feedback cycle. As part of that feedback cycle, it went to the full CELT, and it also went back up to our buildings, to our department chairs and building administrators, and then all of that was brought back, and each time the entire CELT could react and respond to the edits as it went forward. And so yesterday was the final piece. As a part of our meeting yesterday, not only was it going through the equity statement as a full CELT, but it was also talking about the implementation plan. And so it's very exciting and very promising. And so who is joining us today for part of this read? We have two student representatives from CELT from each building, and we have two staff numbers from each building from CELT, in addition to the board members and our goal champions. Are we ready, Mr. Buckle?
And still, we're still missing two.
Perhaps if...
I think we have a good number of folks, at least in the middle part.
If the building principals could take the roles of those two staff members that are missing, if they do not join us, that would be great. I believe it's Billson and Mrs. Saunders that we're waiting for?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. So with that, we will begin. "The mission of Hinsdale Township High School District 86 is to empower students to pursue their ideal future by acquiring critical skills and knowledge to collaborate, create, and connect with an ever-changing world. We will accomplish the coherent, deliberate, intentional equity work that prioritizes the equality of opportunity and equality of outcome for every student. We define equity work as the act and art of providing each student with what they need to meet their learning and well-being requirements. We recognize that equity is not always providing all students with the same experience, rather all students receive what they need for their success. By embracing our diversity, District 86 recognizes the importance of making and supporting significant shifts in mindset and practice to provide and sustain equitable outcomes for all students so that they may pursue their ideal future.
By listening to our students, staff, and community, we acknowledge the importance of seeing, hearing, and celebrating their identities in our curriculum, programs, pathways, and school experiences.
To be a leader for equity in our policies, practices, and curriculum, each stakeholder will proactively work to eliminate opportunity and achievement gaps. Ensure success for all students by identifying and addressing personal and institutional bias and barriers.
And provide strategies to ensure students of all races and cultures have equitable access to diverse educators, rigorous instructors, rich learning opportunities, social and emotional, academic and community supports, and resources towards success.
To achieve this purpose, we grant our equity work and the actions of the District 86 Strategic Plan.
Goal one, student growth and achievements. Raising the academic achievements and social-emotional outcomes for all students while eliminating the historically predictable racial outcomes. Designing and implementing a culturally responsive curriculum and pedagogy that interrupts racism and other systems of oppression and allows all students to see themselves in their school environment.
Identifying and removing barriers in our current policies, procedures, systems, and practices that limit opportunities for our students.
Goal two, the learning environment. Developing a culture that promotes and sustains diversity, equity, and inclusion in all student
Cultivating transformative social and emotional skills that empower students to have critically conscious discourse on diverse political and social topics in order to become engaged, active, global citizens.
Goal three, work environment. Recruiting, hiring, and retaining a diverse staff that more closely reflects the school community in terms of race, cultural background, linguistic skill, physical abilities, and disabilities, sex and sexual, and gender identity.
These recruitment goals seek a distribution of opportunities across all employee groups. Providing professional development for all employees to identify, examine, and eliminate institutional beliefs, policies, and practices that perpetuate discrimination based on race, culture, religion, language, ability, gender, and/or sexual identity.
Goal four, family and community connections. Regularly seeking and amplifying the voices of students, staff, families, and community members, especially from historically marginalized groups, to help make decisions that support the academic, physical, social, and emotional growth of all learners.
Involve the District 86 Culture and Equity Leadership Team as a school and community partnership to drive systemic accountability between the equity statement and the strategic plan.
Goal five, resources. Utilizing an equity lens to distribute our resources based on specific needs of our students, staff, and families instead of seeking to distribute them equally across the district.
Thank you, everyone. Board members, any feedback before you receive from the goal area?
From my perspective, this is not going to be something that we embark upon and complete whatever limited process we take, and then put it on the shelf and not revisit it. Again, from my perspective, this is significant to what we do in District 86, and to the staff and to the students. This is something we expect that we will adhere to. We will spend time and resources making sure that the equity component of the district is significant, and those take different forms, we're well aware of that. But for the folks that are questioning whether or not there's a significant commitment, it was put to me on, was it Wednesday or Tuesday? Wednesday, during the meeting, you know, what's the board's commitment to this? And my position very simply was, you have three board members, including the board president, and I typically don't refer myself in that capacity, that are involved in the CELT committee. This is not an accident. We expect that this will be adhered to, and we expect the staff will adopt it, and it's not going to be something that will be dusted off and rolled out in the beginning of the school year. So for the folks that are questioning what the commitment level is, I'm confident that it's there at the board level, which by definition means it will be there at the administrative level and filter down even further.
And on that point too, as far as the three board members being on that committee, as at my recollection is, there are seven board members who have been happy and eager to be on that committee, but four took a step back to allow others to be on it. So there is great interest in participation in that, and obviously then support to the efforts of that committee.
I'd just like to publicly thank the students. I mean, I get to participate as a board member, and the grace and respect that the students have, and the passion they have for this work, and how much they want to really support, and I wouldn't say improve, but show their, those students how important this topic is to them. I mean, they come and they engage in some of the most challenging conversation and discussion topics, and they do so with such, they're just brave young leaders, and I just appreciate being a part of them, being able to partner with them, and so really learn from them. I'm just excited about what our future holds with our students of both Central and South. It's just something that's in the experience to be a part of.
The board members, hearing none? And Superintendent?
Okay, thank you. So now I'm going to turn over to Goal Champion, Dr. Chris Covino, to give you overview of the 1920 accomplishments and what we've been up to this year.
Thank you, Superintendent Krennis. The slide that you are seeing right now highlights the accomplishments from the 2020 school years, the last full school year. And this slide and the next are broken into two large components, the curriculum alignment achievements, and those other things that are in process related to curriculum alignment, as well as grading practices alignment. From a curriculum alignment perspective, under goal one, the current program of studies, the one that's actually in use right now, had, they worked very diligently to create some very colorful pages that are inside of each one that started the process of identifying where alignment needed to happen from a, from a course perspective. So one of the accomplishments was actually including that in the program of studies, and so the beginning of each of the content areas inside that program of studies. And then the actual on-the-ground curriculum work was really in the science program and the math programs. The science program started the Physics and the Universe course this year, with all students at Hinsdale South taking the course, all freshmen taking the course, and 35% of freshmen choosing to take the course at Hinsdale Central as part of the three-year rollout of that course as a freshman requirement. Currently, the chemistry programs, or the science program, is working diligently on the chemistry-aligned curriculum, which will take effect next year, next school year, as well as beginning on the new biology-aligned curriculum. Again, rolling out respectively 2021, 22, and 2223. And then as the board knows very well, the math program was busy at work analyzing pathways, and we presented and was approved this year for, for them to continue to work on the first course that will be on the next slide. As far as grading practices are concerned, but we'll...
Dr. Covino, before we move on to grading practices, for those who may not be aware, can you explain why all the students at South, but only 35% of the freshmen at Central were in the Physics and the Universe sequence? I think it's important that we visit that so that people don't think there's a disparity, and if there is a disparity, why is that the case?
Absolutely. So physics, as a introductory science course at the high school level, had been the course at Hinsdale South for several years. So the transition to Physics and the Universe, the new course, it was just natural for all the students to stay in physics. It was not a choice. At Hinsdale Central, it was biology, biology followed by chemistry followed by physics. And as this transition occurred, in order to create a slower rollout and to make sure the curriculum was created in line, the choice was given to parents in the Hinsdale Central community as to which course they wanted to start with, whether with biology or physics. That choice will continue to be a choice for the next two years, and students are signing up right now for next year, and we'll be able to give you an update on how many have selected physics this year. But last year, the students who were actually in Physics and the Universe at Hinsdale Central is 35% of the freshman class this year.
Thank you.
Grading practice alignment began with a group called the Learning Leadership Team. It is a representative group across the district of department chairs, teachers, and administrators from every department, and they began and concluded a year-long study of effective grading practices, spurred on by the fact that there are a variety of grading scales being used in both buildings, across different departments, even inside of the same course team, there are different grading scales. So that was part of the reason to even think about alignment of grading practices. This team spent a great deal of time, I think only interrupted by a March departure to remote learning, to looking at effective grading practices and the research that goes into understanding effective grading practices. They developed a purpose statement, which I believe Director Walsh and McCorney delivered to the board last spring, and we have been using that purpose statement to guide the work this year, which I'll talk about on the next slide. Actually, go back one. There you go. So this is the work this year. Curriculum alignment on the left side. As I said before, the science program team is completing the curriculum writing for chemistry and aligned course across both buildings, and continuing their work with biology. After approval of the math pathway, integrated math pathway program, the math development team went to work and are currently looking at Math 1 and quantitative reasoning outcomes. Their work is progressing very nicely. I heard from Mr. Bonner just this week, they had a big meeting, he and McSenken conducted that, as well as the existing AP and dual credit courses, looking to make sure that they are fully aligned for the pre-outcome year. As far as all the other teams are concerned, right, we are meeting with them this year and are staggering the start of those meetings, but as heard, Mr. Marsaf and I are conducting program team meetings that are really being spearheaded by the department chairs, and six members of the program from across the district, three from each building. And we are making sure that each program is on the same page when it comes to the mission of the program, the goals related to the strategic plan. Then there we begin to talk about any innovations that have, that we need to address in future sequencing of program alignment. We are looking at drafting a common program of studies within the next school year, and looking at revised course sequences when necessary. Each department is looking at KPIs or key performance indicators in order to sort of mark their progress and engage how well they're doing. So that's the work of this year in as far as curriculum alignment is concerned.
May I ask a question, maybe to the grading alignment section? And I apologize if you already stated this, but when is the time period associated with trying to implement this?
The grading side or the grading side?
The grading side.
So is our goal, and it may be a lofty goal, but is our goal to have a standard, single grading scale for the entire district implemented beginning of next year. Mr. Corney-Lip and Professor Walsh and I are smirking under our masks because we have a meeting coming up in about a week and a half, where that is our, that's our stated end goal for that meeting, so I think we're going to be able to hold to that.
Good, board supports that. We're encouraged by your work and that effort.
So Learning Leadership Team continues to talk about all of these things, particularly a common grading scale, but all of the bullet points under there are portions of that conversation. So it's not as simple as just saying what it is, because it has, we have to take into account zeros and academic integrity and grading systems and grade books and what they can and do, but it is work that is progressing and is going well.
And have you considered, I'm sorry, have you considered the impact of what the grading situation is now, with the kids being removed, and how to transition into that? It's a...
Yep. Okay. Any other questions?
If we don't say it directly, we'll include it in the discussion of how we're grading first and afterwards here. And then the last slide for goal one is just a overview of the kind of two-part structure that we put in place to make sure that the work gets done. The first phase is an alignment and innovation phase. The blue column is everything that I highlighted for this year, meaning that almost everyone except for math and science is in the blue column, and we'll progress to green next year, and then hopefully into the continuous improvement phase after that, which is more about having common assessments and space to discuss how well or poorly students are doing with those common assessments. Everything that is red is directly connected to the CELT mission statement. So the idea here is that we are planning specific places. So you'll see in program missions, in API, in unpacked standards, in selecting materials, discussing instructional practices, that all align with the pro-herities goals that we've set in the CELT mission statement. That's all for goal one.
This is Brad Vertan, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, and also the Goal Champion for Goal Two. I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to talk about our accomplishments and our plans for the coming year. As you read through this slide, I'll let you do that independently, I just remind you that Goal Two is composed of four, or three strategies. Strategy four of the strategic plan involves reviewing our calendar and school day. Strategy five involves talking, getting students involved in decision-making. And strategy six, providing social-emotional learning and letting it be stress. You'll see each of these activities involves that. I would say, strategy four, this is more of a learning... I would say Strategy Four, this is more of a learning and analyzing task for us last year. Strategy Five, this is something maybe we're dipping our toes into, it's something that has always been part of District Eighty-Six, but as far as actually changing things, it got on the way last year. And then Strategy Six is something that I would say we were involved in these activities before the last strategic plan was approved, so we're much further along in this area. Then talking about our accomplishments or our plans for this year, some things that I would highlight, it was our intention many, many, many years ago, five, six years ago, when we started our work on social-emotional learning, that with intention, we wanted to be setting the table for what has become a work in equity. We know when student, when people, whether the staff or students, are able to recognize, manage their emotions, and then respond respectfully to each other, that that is, sets a strong basis for this. And our work in equity exchange is going to make us an emotionally intelligent school district, so they're very complementary. I'd also say that we're looking to expand the way students are involved in decision-making, both in our work in equity, but also in talking to other schools to see what they have done to push this forward. And I would say that we're continuing to, this year has really turned things upside down in a number of ways. When we consider what we're doing for calendar and scheduling, we had to make a lot of adjustments. One of the things we wanted to look at was block scheduling, and now we're actually living it. So we're looking at ways to get feedback on those changes and see, you know, how do students and staff respond to those different environments to see if there's changes that we want to consider for the future. And I know it was brought up earlier, but a timeframe for grading and so on, and I assume that the same question might come up for topics like block scheduling. This isn't something that we're really looking at for next year, this is a long-term project at the completion of the strategic plan. And with that, I ask if there's any questions.
Well, but not to argue with you, but I would suggest that we are in fact achieving some of the Goal Two objectives because the PTAC Committee and the students in particular indicated they wanted block scheduling, which is exactly what we're doing for the spring semester. So for those who suggest that the administrators aren't listening to what we're hearing, we in fact are demonstrating exactly what it is that we're hearing. So I congratulate you, Brad, as a Goal Two champion, for putting that into practice.
Thank you. Any other questions?
For Goal Three is the work environment, and myself, Principal Walsh, and Principal Corny have been covering it. As you know, we have an inch around HR factor, and so there's one less task for Mary to worry about, and so we will present. So I can turn it over to the Principals to do 1920 accomplishments.
Thank you, Superintendent Prentice. And as you said, out of respect for Mary Duda, Arwin and I are happy to present the accomplishments and the initiatives for the 1920 and 2021 school years. Strategy Three has, or Goal Three has three strategies. Strategy Seven, which is staff engagement. Strategy Eight is meaningful data, centers on meaningful data. And Strategy Nine centers on communication between District Eighty-Six and the Center Schools, or feeder school districts, whatever term you use. For last school year, 2019, 2010 school year, we created the D86 Cultural Equity Leadership Team, which you just heard many staff, many people speak to, we got an equity statement. We had our Learning Leadership Team, which was a really, really valuable experience for our staff, as well as me as a building principal, to really dive deep into some of the things we're looking at as presented earlier tonight. Superintendent Prentice and us as well expanded our parent teacher advisory council to get more direct feedback from our students, staff, and our community on many of the initiatives we are employing. We've included more voices in our review of board of policies, that's very exciting. And we've increased communication with our bargaining groups as well. Created longevity program for our support staff to sort of recognize the value that they are bringing every day to our students and staff and our building climate and culture as well. And then finally, we transitioned to the remote learning environment, in case you didn't know, we're a remote learning environment. We have created a R3 committee that helps us and meets regularly as we continue to examine our practices this year and into what will be next year potentially, as well as we talk about later. Strategy Eight regarding meaningful data, we, District Eighty-Six is continuing to investigate the use of our satisfaction survey and a tool that we can use to get feedback from parents, staff, and students. And lastly, as both Dr. Covino said and Mr. Prentice said, the Center School communication has been really good between our regular articulation meetings and our normal part of school, but we also had, as we talked about, Strategy Goal, Goal One, Strategy One, as we talk about curriculum alignment, having those Center Schools be a part of our conversations to make sure that what, when we receive the students from the eighth grade, we are ready to meet their needs. We did a lot last year, but we have a lot more we're looking forward to, and I'll turn it over to Principal Corny Lip to provide that.
But before that happens, with respect to Strategy Nine, I've heard from feeder school superintendents as well as board members from some of our feeder schools, they're very encouraged by the way that we've been reaching out to them under Tammy as superintendent, and I would strongly encourage that that remains to be the case. It seems that we've, how can I put this diplomatically, we've approached feeder schools differently than we have previously to our benefit, and I think we need to continue doing that. So Principal Lip?
Thank you. So in continuing in Goal Three, one of the things that we keep in mind in planning all of these initiatives is just what Goal Three says, which is making sure we're creating additional systems that promote staff engagement and collaboration. Those are the two main things we focus on, is looking at ways to increase staff voice here in District Eighty-Six. So just continuing on some of the initiatives that have taken place from the structure that Principal Walsh described. So we know that our R3, our R3 committee continues to meet about how instruction should be delivered during the pandemic. We've had summer as part of 2021, I just want to again publicly thank every member of the R3 team. The amount of hours spent by that team this summer was immense and highly productive and highly collaborative in it. It was a pretty amazing thing to be a part of, despite the fact that obviously none of us wanted to be in a global pandemic, but I'm really appreciative of the collaboration from that group and the time that that group continues to come in. The LLT, like Bill, Walsh, and Principal Covino have talked about, that is our team of teachers truly working collaboratively together to determine what a common grading philosophy should be in District Eighty-Six. As you've heard, at our next meeting, it is our goal to land on a common district grading scale to implement at the beginning of next school year, and we are also discussing how many uses of how the zero should be used. It's much more complicated than you might think at first glance. Part of this work, as we talk about empowering all teachers to help with decisions in District Eighty-Six, every teacher is involved in Goal One curriculum alignment work for their department at some level. So teachers all have the opportunity to be a part of different teams determining what that district curriculum will look like. As you're familiar too, we've increased the teacher presence on PTAC. So PTAC is our forum where we balance pretty much any kind of big plan, big decision that needs to be made in our district. We always make sure that it goes to PTAC first. So that's a chance, it's parents, parents, teachers, and students, but in this case, we're focusing on the teachers and we're all making sure they have a say in what happens. And then like you've heard, it is our goal to maintain consistent collaboration and communication with all of our different collective bargaining groups. No updates from Principal Walsh about the Strategies Eight and Nine. President Prentice, just to kind of echo what you said, we very much validate the positive relationship we have right now with our Center Schools, and we're fully committed to continuing that and continuing to progress.
Good evening, everyone. Chris Jesselka, Director of Communications. So in the update that I provided in December, excuse me, of 2019, one of the things I talked about was having an overarching goal of just improving the quality, the quantity, and the frequency of our district communications, and the strategy ten, which is communication and collaboration. And so as part of that effort, we launched the updates from Eighty-Six, weekly emails that go to all students, staff, families, about 1,000 right now, and 81 community members, all of our feeder soup, area mayors, and local press. We get submissions from across the district, from South, Central, and Transition, and we're seeing an average open rate, we were last year, of those communications of 51% when the average rate for the K-12 industry is just a little over 27%. We did two print newsletters that went to, one in January, one in September, that were mailed to approximately 35,000 businesses and residences. We've increased the level of detail in the board briefs and are seeing an open rate of around 40%. We updated the content across the district's family of websites, and then we also started doing outreach to different student, staff, and parent groups as a way to just sort of build those relationships and start the dialogue and communication with them. For Strategy Eleven, which is community partnerships, we actually discovered through some of our strategic plan meetings that in fact what Strategy Eleven states is very similar to what Strategy Three under Goal One states. So what we've determined is the need for these two strategy teams to collaborate going forward so that we have a focused and cohesive district-wide plan when we're dealing with and trying to meet the vocational career and life readiness needs of our students. So those were the accomplishments for last year. In terms of the initiatives for this year, we're really shifting the focus of Goal Four. So basically, Goal Four is now going to become a de facto team member of all of the other goals, because what you see, and we've already seen it here tonight, is that the work being undertaken by the other Goal Champions truly is representative of the different ways that people can get involved and contribute to the work of the district. And so under the initiatives for this year, identify opportunities for stakeholders to inquire about our weigh-in on different issues. So feedback surveys about the return to school, we've administered to students and staff and parents. Superintendent Prentice has held several meetings with student leaders. She did that during first semester, I reached out to the activities directors this week to try to get those started again. The Math Pathways Community Forums, and I do want to recognize Mr. Cheval because he very appropriately said during a meeting that not only do we have to offer these forums, but we have to set the expectation for what people can, you know, can, will experience and what they can expect from those. And so we were very cognizant of making sure that when we communicated, we were very clear about what people could expect in terms of weighing in, asking questions during the forums. And then PTAC, and I want to give credit to this community, we put out the call for PTAC when we expanded the size and the scope, and we got 120 applicants for the positions on PTAC, which I think is a testament to how committed this community is to the work that we do in our schools. We're publicizing different ways that people can get involved, so that was the board vacancy, the form we put out for substitute teachers, the different ways that we're keeping people updated and informed, so it's our return-to-school website, our COVID dashboard, the update emails, we've done a staff newsletter now, we've done two or three iterations of that this year, and then our next print newsletter is going to go out in March. We're still looking at updating the content on our website, we may actually be approaching a full redesign at some point in the near future. I know that Bill and Arwin have already talked about the satisfaction surveys, we actually, our friends in District 99 provided us with the name of a company named Panorama Education that is doing their satisfaction surveys, and they've been very, very happy, so we're going to reach out to the rep they've been working with to start the process of looking into doing some satisfaction surveys here in the district. Obviously, I already addressed, you know, the strategy around Goal One, Strategy Three, and collaborating with that, and then begin developing at district level alumni relations plan. The only issue with that and the website redesign is that our communications coordinator, Chris Katavas, was going to be leading both of those efforts, and he is departing for another position tomorrow as his last day, so that work will probably take a little bit longer than we anticipated.
All right, moving on to Goal Five. Josh Stevens, District CFO, and the team for Goal Five. Goal Five is comprised of four strategies, and there's five teams that are working within those five strategies. Strategy Twelve, the team there is the Budget Alignment Team. The accomplishments for the year, this was the budget planning for 2021, was the first year that we had department chairs working across the district in conjunction with their counterparts, and the departmental budget documents were presented, you know, together. So the Science Department from Central and South had worked together on their documents, and they're presented to the Board and the community in the same document. So this work will continue as we start gearing up for the 22 budget planning cycle. Strategy Thirteen, Classroom Design, early in 2020, was the furniture showcase where we had students, staff, come through and look at different classroom furniture and provide feedback and recommendations for what to use in the pilot classrooms that were renovated over the summer of 2020. There were 10 pilot classrooms that were completed as part of the initial pilot. Strategy Fourteen has two different teams that are working there, accessibility and life safety are broken into two different teams. There, in 2020, we made some significant improvements in accessibility at Central and South, particularly in regards to the athletic field and the specialized renovations at Hinsdale South as well. From a life safety perspective, nearly all internal life safety items were complete, all the priority A life safety items completed prior to 1920, and we are still working through the priority B items for life safety. Capital replacement plan is part of Strategy Fifteen. Last year, IRT and B&amp;G completed their draft of their equipment replacement plan. The initiatives for 2021, the budget alignment, the department chairs will continue to work in conjunction with their counterparts, and we will continue to refine and improve that process as we move forward. The Strategy Thirteen, the classroom redesign, we have 42 classrooms that are scheduled to be renovated in the summer of 2021, and with the allocation of the bond premium funds, the remaining 171 classrooms will be renovated. We'll be working over the next couple of months with the construction manager and architects to figure out logistically where those classroom renovations will fall between the summer of '22 and '23. Strategy Fourteen, accessibility and life safety, all the referendum funds that were earmarked specifically for accessibility have been allocated to the Phase Two and Phase Three projects. One of the big items coming up in the summer of '22 will be the grandstands of both stadiums. After next summer, both grandstands of the stadiums will be, both campuses will be fully up to current accessibility codes. In the life safety projects, we're still working to make sure that Phase Two and Three, we complete all of the remaining life safety items. And then capital replacement plan, we're working now with additional departments this year to start developing their equipment capital replacement plan, and we're working to potentially evaluate a software system for tracking capital.
Board members, any questions?
Sure. Josh. A quick question on for Strategy Fifteen for the capital replacement plan. So with either of the three departments broadly mentioned, we can get legs, our music, do we have an expectation of kind of a timeline or some of those are going to be coming to, you know, finance in two months, in eight months? How does that come about?
Ideally, as we go, it'll be kind of in conjunction with budget planning for '22. So basically, the calendar for the budget planning, we generally kind of start kicking things off in January, and it kind of goes through, you know, March, April for budget planning for the next year. So it'll be, within that time, though, that we're working with those departments, obviously, you know, trying to prioritize in the current environment, what is, you know, what are the most critical things to be working on, but we will definitely be diving more into the capital replacement plan for these departments this spring.
Thank you. Just a quick comment or observation, I guess. Just a quick comment or observation, I guess, with respect to Strategy Four, Strategy T Fourteen, Goal Five. I just remember the feeling of kind of futility and being overwhelmed pre-re referendum when we had the list of life safety things and accessibility things, and it's like, my gosh, what am I going to crawl up underneath this? And these are critical and very important things. So it's great to see that we're kind of wiping this late plan and catching up completely with that. And equally satisfying is to see Strategy Fifteen, the capital replacement plan, being pursued so that we never find, well, never say never. But it'll be at least several boards away that we are bored looking at the things that have deteriorated to the point that they had before that point. I could particularly recall Board Member Turk's harping, I mean, passion about having that in place, and it's shared by all, obviously, but for some reason Marty talking about stands out of my mind about the importance of having that in our budget on an ongoing basis so we don't find ourselves in that position again. On a general note, and it seems maybe as good at this point when talking about strategic plan, is maybe to reference it partly because it's not, really doesn't have a spot in the strategic plan, and maybe that's a slight oversight on our part when we started talking about doing strategic plans several years ago. But I wonder whether we should consider, and this would be a gift for those moving forward, but it's been a concern of mine, at least for three years, I would say perhaps all four years, of how the community, the board, and to, I'd say now in a lesser extent, administration and staff interact with each other, and understanding of the roles with respect to those different entities, and what are reasonable expectations for the one versus the other. And I think there, and maybe this creeps over time and it gets better for a while or whatever else, but it seems, my impression is that perhaps the district stakeholders could, and the board in particular, could benefit from some understandings and some commonalities of what is reasonable to expect of a board and board members, and what are board members' obligations that should be fulfilled as well. And I think that might contribute to a healthier functioning among all those entities. I suspect that some people will never be happy, and some people will always look for opportunities to stir things up or cause issues. But I think we could go a long ways perhaps to maybe do a bolt-on to the strategic plan for looking at some of that or some other kind of effort to create a group to pursue that, to look at that, and then to keep that publicized as far as what is reasonable to expect in all the situations. So just a pin of that for now, and that's it for me. Thank you.
That's a lot of goal for the two thousand twenty-one board, what it is seated. Any other board members? Hearing none, we'll move on to five point two. Administration will provide the board with an update of the district's return-to-school plan, including details about first semester grades, professional development, lunch, walls in the fieldhouse, and staffing. Superintendent Prentice.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Next slide. So just a reminder of the framework for second semester as we pivot here, we're currently in what we call the Step Two, which is somewhere between, I'm sorry, Step Three, which is somewhere between the twenty-five to fifty percent of enrollment, and we'll get into the data and the facts for second semester. But that, just as a, for your recollection, that down below, there's not a particular number or particular score, but if you recall, we had a robust conversation right before, right before Thanksgiving around those local metrics that we're constantly paying attention to. Happy to report that we continue to have no transmissions at home school. Next slide. As you're aware, we have a data dashboard on our main website. This is just gives you, since we've been keeping track, this is updated, these are our metrics, our zip code attendance for District Eighty-Six, and this is automatically updated every day on our website, you can see on our Western site, and you can see the seven-day and fourteen-day average there based on date. And that is on our dashboard. Next slide. Covering Friday, we update the data, and this is as of last Friday, and it's for that week and then the totality at the bottom. So you see coming back these last two weeks returning, it hasn't been a significant high number. We actually had far more impactful numbers back in November, and that's where we stand currently. And now I will turn it over.
To me. Still. Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Superintendent Prentice. As we continue our work, and I want to reflect a little bit on Semester One as we do move forward, the shift to remote or hybrid instruction affects the students, teachers, and families in many different ways. We've talked about it repeatedly. Our students have stepped up the best they could under this environment. Our teachers have done an outstanding job of adapting to their instructional strategies to meet the needs of students in a remote environment, and our families have been supporters in trying to meet the needs of all of us as we continue to teach in a pandemic. Some students, however, are experiencing significant difficulty. It's been really important that we truly understand that everybody has to act differently. While some students thrive, and some students are able to adapt and carry on with little to no academic struggle, we do have students who are in significant difficulties. The pandemic has created situations that are out of the control of our students and families. For example, we have students who have experienced significant trauma-related COVID-nineteen situations, in particular with multiple family members in an intergenerational home. When I use the word trauma, it means more than medical care. It also means psychological, social, and emotional impact. We are seeing this every day amongst our students, and we are doing the best we can to meet their needs in whatever way our capacity allows us to. We have students who are working full-time to support their families during the high unemployment times that they're seeing. We have students attending classes between their work shifts, who are working, whether it's part-time or full-time. We have students who are caring for siblings and elderly family members in their home during the school day. We have students experience instability in their housing accommodations. We have students lacking reliable internet access, and we have students sharing internet access with their siblings and other family members who are in their work environments. It is a traumatic time for many, many of our students, as you can see. In addition, as we continue to reflect on our Semester One accomplishments and the work we're doing, we are prioritizing a continuity of robust instruction. Each month, we increase opportunities for students to interact with their teachers, increase the number of students attending school in person, increase intervention opportunities for those who are struggling, such as I just mentioned, and we recognize and understand there are better ways to communicate and understand what students, teachers, families need in order to be academically successful and psychologically and emotionally safe. The pandemic has created a lot of adapt, adapting on behalf of our teaching environment in these days. As we continue to reflect, adding Semester One grade options to give students benefit of the doubt. Principal Corin Lip talked a little bit in the moment about incomplete grades and no grades that we issued on the report cards that went live last week. Principal Corin Lip?
Thank you. So I'm going to talk a little bit about some changes we made to first semester that we've entitled pandemic grading, and it's really through that trauma-informed lens. So few things, you can see on the chart. The first option was just the earned grade, so ensuring that teachers had the autonomy to issue whatever grade a student earned, and that this could include a grade of F. We typically only, a student received a grade of F was only recorded when a student failed to demonstrate academic proficiency after receiving robust academic intervention, and also after receiving intervention with the parents and the student support team as well. And if a student didn't earn F, it was a normal F, which has a negative impact on a student's GPA. So that was an option. The second option described here is the incomplete grade, which has always been an option, but we expanded its use as part of the pandemic. Students who receive an incomplete were typically students who were missing a few core assignments or assessments that needed to be completed before an academic grade was issued. So this would have been a student who did most of their work, was successful most of the time, but was missing a few key things, and had their grade, was sitting on an F at the end of the semester. So instead of the student receiving an F, they received an incomplete. Students have until January twenty-second to complete that work for the semester, and we currently have interventions in place that started this week to help our students with incompletes who probably get credit. The third option on the chart, which was new as part of the pandemic, was NG for no grade. And this was a student who simply had not completed enough work to determine whether or not basic proficiency was met. So typically, these were students who maybe experienced a significant hardship or had trauma, such as what Principal Walsh described. These students do not receive credit for the class. So it's similar to an F in that no credit is earned, and if the course is part of the sequence, you don't move on to the next level. The difference is that it does not come with a GPA penalty of an F. So you still don't earn the credit, you still have to be held accountable for making up that credit, but because it's a pandemic, it took the GPA penalty of having an F off the table. And I just want to echo what Principal Walsh said. If we didn't have these trauma-informed practices, students who received incompletes or no grades would have received Fs. And just as a reminder to the board, over the last few years, we have partnered with Lurie Children's Hospital Center for Childhood Resilience to ensure we are applying the trauma-informed practices across our schools. Throughout the whole pandemic, this training has been especially helpful as we navigate the collective trauma caused by COVID-nineteen. The decision to not further penalize students for having learning struggles in a pandemic with an F grade reflects our ongoing commitment to the work of supporting our students while also holding them accountable for their next steps.
This slide provides an overview of all of the grades issued. And just to keep in mind, and even on that last slide, what we're talking about here in these numbers are occurrences of grades. These are not students, but these are actual, these are, every student has approximately seven classes, so seven classes times the number of students, so that's why the numbers are so high. Underneath each of the schools, you can see a calculation of the difference in grades. We had made the, we, in doing an analysis of grades a couple of months ago, as we were just beginning to implement interventions and really understanding how the pandemic was affecting academics, we saw a very high number of Ds and Fs higher than we originally, than are normally experienced in District Eighty-Six. As you can see from this chart, that is, that was not the case at the end of the semester. What you do see, though, is an increase in the incompletes and the no grades, really providing students an opportunity to extend the time in terms of an incomplete, that they can work on the assignments, and in the case of a no grade, a second chance, an opportunity to take a course again, not harming their grade or their GPA, but at the same time making sure that the work gets put in and that they actually understand the content and are able to do what the course requires of them. You also notice an increase in the number of A grades given while the Bs and Cs decreased. So across the board, students are, the initial thought that the students would be failing a number of classes, I believe, is remediated due to the excellent communication of the school, to the families, the excellent work of the teachers, working with the students and the leadership of the departments and the building administrators. So I think that this student achievement is, actually reflects some great teamwork on the part of both schools.
Can I ask a few questions here before we move on? Sure. So thanks for that, and this is really interesting data. Do you have a sense of how DuPage County did, the state did, or even national, did everybody do this a little bit?
Some high schools are still on first semester because they delayed school by two weeks. So we were the only one that actually stayed on track first semester, so many students are still in first semester classes.
Right. Superintendent, I can just jump in. Principal Corin Lip and I meet with the WSC, which is the Weston Bourbon Conference Principals, and there's sixteen of us, at least once a month, and we've met quite more than that throughout this pandemic. There was a lot of collaborative effort in that alone, and I know the assistant principals meet with their network of assistant principals as well. So we were all talking the same language. We might have done it slightly different, you know, IIC or NG or different letters, but we're all pretty much, I think, working in the same mission because of that collaboration, because this isn't in isolation. We don't, we don't teach in isolation, and we don't collaborate in isolation. We work together on this. So to answer your question, now, Mr. Tor, Board Member Turk, is, I think you'll end up seeing there's a lot of crossover that's very similar because we work so closely together.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because that was my concern months back, was were you going to have these outliers? And all's I wanted was, you know, in a perfect world, nationally, but certainly statewide, DuPage, is that we did it consistently. And hopefully, we did. And from my point of view, I think we're going to have gaps, but the gaps are going to go from K to senior year of K, Ever College, and it's not for one school to figure out the gaps, because we're going to inherit a bunch of eighth graders that may have gaps. And it sounds, you know, a little, but the nation's going to have to figure out where the gaps are. The states are going to have to figure out, the districts, the counties. So I'm encouraged that you guys were collaborating with your local, you know, DuPage County, and everybody did it consistent, because I hate to see an outlier above, and I hate to see an outlier below with no fault to the student. You know, in this pandemic, the student is not doing anything wrong, they're all trying to figure out, so thanks.
Yeah, and just to, so I guess to piggyback off that, because I was thinking about the gap thing as well, because to me, that's like the major concern, that, you know, because of the blocks of time and the spacing between, how much curriculum are we able to cover, how much information are we covering for the classes, are the kids missing anything? And then you add the emotional, social, emotional part on top of that, and the stress for our juniors and seniors, some taking, you know, these major exams, others getting ready to apply to colleges, you know, or getting sentences from colleges. And so I guess my question is, you know, I know you said you're collaborating at the level of, you know, high school and talking there, but is there any partnership with even universities, deans, have they been in committee form to talk about, you know, these gaps and these challenges with grades that students have been experiencing, and how that looks for them from an acceptance standpoint and even a sustainment standpoint?
Well, I can start. Not necessarily from a gap perspective, how we've been collaborating with universities, but I can tell you that we believe with almost every university we have a partnership with, they are being very, very flexible. So we've seen increased flexibility with application deadlines, schools that have always, who have not ever been test-optional schools, are test-optional schools. And I think, Board Member Turk, to your point, colleges are aware that grading during a pandemic is very challenging, and so have some, like, just different procedures in place with a lot of flexibility that grades might be different. So the partnership isn't so much about learning gaps, but just about that partnership and ensuring the seamless transition, so that our students are able to pursue whatever their next step is.
Okay. And that's the only other thing is, you know, to Marty's point, I know that gaps will exist, but I, you know, I think I would charge us to try to figure out how to address it.
I can speak to two of those things. DuPage County is actually putting a task force together, and K-E can, Darlene Masetti is working with the K-E feeders to create interventions. She has some care of grant fund money as well, so that call-out just happened in the last week, and it was also open to high schools. We have a very robust intervention program during the school year and during the summer, but I am very encouraged at all of our middle school feeders, because sometimes the larger you are, we're much larger than some of our feeder elementaries, we have far more resources to sort of deal with this piece, but the county is creating a means to start analyzing and looking at those gaps and work collaboratively. So all the fifth graders, you know, whatever those needs are before they come up them. So they are in the process of designing that for the summer.
Okay, this is, because I can't see you, I don't know who's you want to speak. Can I ask something?
Certainly.
Okay, just, all right. First off, I find it remarkable that we, at both schools, we have a First off, I find it remarkable that we, at both schools, we have a higher number of As in the current school year than the previous school year, semester one. And then the other statistic I see that is remarkable is that the overall GPA at each school is higher in the the current year than in the previous year. And I know, I, I'm trying to square that with what I've been reading and hearing about with regard to the increase in Ds and Fs that are issued. And it sounds to me like we are addressing that that pandemic effect of students who would, under typical grading circumstances, be receiving, receiving Fs, Ds and Fs, were were applying interventions to help those students do better. Is that what I'm seeing here?
Correct. There were, as we provided in other updates, there were interventions that were specifically on students, the days were extended on campus and they provided direct intervention in person or virtually in Zoom. And then as the team was just sharing, teachers had different grading options and and we're still supporting those students and then receive the incomplete or the no grade now. And then we're about to launch and to let you know the additional supports that are happening through second semester. If you look at our bell schedule for second semester, which I don't want to jump ahead of R, but she's about to share it, you will see that in the second semester schedule, we deliberately put in, we delayed the leaving of the buses and so that there are opportunities when students are on campus before they board their bus to have access to a teacher and/or support member, which is something they did not have access to last semester.
Okay, that, that's very reassuring. The next question goes to the fidelity and the integrity of the grade that the students receive. So an A that is received this year has the same weight and value as an A. Nothing has been, I don't even know how to explain, because the statistic is not my my field, but a student who receives a B in a course this year, that B has the same value as a student who received a B in that course in the previous year. And that would hold true, it's not, the, the implementation of the interventions is not lowering the fidelity or the integrity of the grade the students receive.
No, the 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 grade, the grade point average and what a grade is worth or weighted is exactly the same as it has been in the past. One of the ways, and and I wouldn't, wouldn't say that this is the the only reason, but one of the reasons that a a series of grades or any single grade letter might go up like an A is because some of the reflective grading practices that teachers and course teams have already begun to institute this year, such as offering a retake in some areas or offering to accept late work for more credit than they may have in the past or or even at all. So we can, we can point to some of the the ways that teachers are intervening with and working with students to both explain and to talk about a reduction in failing grades as well as some grades that may have improved as well.
Question.
Thank you.
Thanks. Question here. So with the no grade, knowing that the the incomplete that we had was an existing practice that was expanded for for these times, and the no grade is a new practice, is there an expectation that the no grade will be an existing practice going forward beyond this school year? I guess maybe that's front-running the the LLTS conversation on the grading scale in general, but is that something that we should expect to see continue? And I, and I ask that because when you, when we look too at at the numbers here on on this chart, you know, we we do see a decrease in Fs year over year, but those Fs, you could argue, are being shifted potentially right over to the incomplete and to the no grade. And, you know, while there, there is an increase, it's at, you know, in South, it's roughly a 20% increase. If you were to say those were all BS, you know, Central, it's a little bit more dramatic at maybe a 200% plus increase in what would have been an F. So is the, is the no grade going to be, especially since we don't know what the fall will look like when it comes to hybrid or all in person, you know, that's, everything of course is still a flex, you know, should we kind of move forward with with the notion that that no grade will at least be around for an additional period of time to again accommodate this different, hopefully temporary, learning environment that's causing some of these stresses or traumas, to use Principal Walsh's term, on on the students?
I, I can address a little bit. So Principal Walsh talked about the collaboration we have with the principals of the Western Urban Conference. And one of the things we talked about before we decided to use the NG grade was actually talking about students in the past who have had very serious trauma or very serious issues. Our student support teams have had to come together in the past, pre-pandemic, to do creative solutions for students who are in a really tight spot. And sometimes we have used that NG or no credit or just different alternatives on a very rare face-by-face basis. And the discussion with the principals at the WSC was kind of similar. We all have this collective trauma that's causing us to think about policies and practices that we might have only used, you know, maybe once a year in an extreme case and use it for more students. So that was our decision to use the NG for first semester. And I think, to your point, until we know more about what's happening, I think it'd be premature for us to speculate. I would imagine that if we were staying in hybrid and continuing to see the student struggles that we see, I would imagine that we would lean towards keeping it, but I don't imagine that it's something that will be permanent. It will be something that we're examining throughout the course of the pandemic. Principal Walsh, Dr. Pobin, I hope you have it.
Thank you. Okay, who's taking us through the wide world of Semester Two instructional and operational updates? We're halfway through the slide deck, folks. Fifty thousand-foot view, maybe a little bit better for the board?
Sure. So this is just a reminder of the schedule that we had before. So very quickly, like Superintendent Superintendent says, the highlights of this, you can see on Mondays and Thursdays, that all students have the opportunity to participate in in-person office hours, followed by additional intervention in the afternoon. Tuesdays and Fridays are when we're seeing students on campus longer, when they're having lunch, followed by in-person hours in the afternoon. And then the next slide is just a reminder of the lunch schedule. Students have 30 minutes to eat lunch. The first, tomorrow will be our second day of serving lunches and our first day of serving lunches regularly will involve both buildings. The next slide is just a reminder of the calendar for January. The real only thing to highlight here is what happens on January 20th, when we do not have a remote day on Wednesday. So essentially Tuesday is Monday and Wednesday is Tuesday, because there's nothing confusing about that at all. But just a reminder that in honor of the Martin Luther King holiday and wanting to make sure our students still receive four days of in-person instruction, the schedule is a little bit different next week, with the Wednesday remote day is not there.
With the holidays throughout the spring semester, will that be the typical adjustment? Okay, thank you.
They will.
I wanted to take an opportunity just to update a couple of protocols that we are working on. As most of us are aware, the Zoom cameras will be expected to be on this semester. However, students who might need an accommodation for some of the many trauma reasons that we expressed earlier can make accommodations with their dean and or social worker that will enable them to have that off. But our initial response in the five days we've been in school has been very positive. We're seeing much more, at least eyes and forehead. We're still working on the the faces for the kids that are on there, but we're, we're moving in the right direction, the cameras down with people on. We also have some lunch accommodations, as you break them out, we imagine. Our students and families might be happy to be on campus. There's still some who are, are issues or are struggling with and understand why they might need lunch accommodations. Those lunch accommodations can also be made with the dean's office in regards to it. For example, students might leave class after their six out of eight class if they have nine, if they've launched a start of ninth period, then they might do their ninth and tenth period remote. Or if they have lunch at the very last half of ninth period, it might be in-person for ninth and then remote for 10th. So those are examples of lunch accommodations where students can leave. It can be in part or whole, regardless of remote for ninth period and or 10th period. Questions on those? Second semester overview. Here's a look again at our numbers, our students cohort at Central and South. Roughly just over 50% of students are in the hybrid mode and again, very aligned between 30 and 40% of students who are starting in remote. That means starting in remote means at some point they can or may transition back to school. And I think we'll talk about that in a few moments, right? And then we have students who will be remote for the entire semester, that hovers roughly 6%, 8% of both campuses. And then we do have some everyday students as well. We have students right now in our foundation, CAH, Haggan programs, that are remote every or everyday on campus. And then we are working with the student support teams, both the specialized and the generalized support teams, to identify students who should be every day to meet their needs as well.
The, this slide just talks a little bit about students coming back to the building, either from remote or from a cohort to become an everyday student. And to address the the public comment that we heard earlier and to kind of answer the question about why we wouldn't just be at 50%, if only 50% of students we've identified are actually here now, the the reason for that is because we actually have to prepare on a monthly basis for any number of students to come back to our building and make sure that we have appropriate spacing, you know, six-foot in the mask in in every classroom, which is how we divided the cohorts to begin with. So as an example, even at the beginning of January, only two weeks after we sent the first parent survey, we had over 170 families shift back to in-person and changing their minds, like even within that two-week period. So we would anticipate that on the February 1st, March 1st, March 22nd, other families may also make that decision. So we are giving families the opportunity on a monthly basis to say, while we started remote, we would now like to join our our cohorts. On the other side of that, while we want as many E students there as possible, because we know there are students with a variety of needs, from students with IEPs and 504s to those that just need more academic help, where the intervention is proximity to their teacher every day, we have to balance the the Es with the Ss potentially coming in on a monthly basis. So we'll have to reevaluate that from month to month. The, just as an update, we opened the semester with some professional development that was run by our our team of instructional innovation coaches and department chairs. We highlighted this at the last meeting, but just to give you an update, it went really, really well. The two highlighted blue areas on this slide are the the areas that every teacher spent most of the morning learning about and talking about, really learning from each other, what their best practices have been. These are the, these were the times where we talked about creating assessments that could be given entirely remotely so that no student has an advantage by being a remote as opposed to in-person. We know that that was an issue that was brought to the front by parents and students. This is a a place where they also talked about best ways to engage students when they're in the classroom, trying to move away from the, filling the the space with with lecture and rather highlighting ways that they can engage students in 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 new ways because they have more kids in the classroom, pairing them up because they're there and they can actually interact with each other. So these were a very, these were great meetings. And we will continue to work with teachers as they have questions. Department chairs were the ones leading it with the IIC, so they will be available on a regular basis to all of their teachers to continue these practices.
And just sort of our next steps. As you may hear, the IHSA and IDPH continue to meet and there is, should be, we're currently in tier three and the access to sports and activities is tied to that mitigation level that they enact. And so we continue to wait and be ready to give it to the athletic department on the next year, regardless of impacted, if we are to switch to tier two, are ready to go. And we are just waiting to see that status that is dictated by the IDPH. As principals and activity directors are already working with their student groups to make preliminary plans for those class of 2021 celebrations around common graduation that work has begun and trying to see different options. It's very difficult to imagine what April May may or may not look like, but those activities and options and getting getting their E's and desires, and we obviously learned a lot last year. I think we did a phenomenal job, given the situation and what we did offer our graduates based on the situation. And so we'll take that information and continue to work through options that our seniors would like to see. Just a little bit of update, the last meeting I had shared that recommendation and then about a weekly, we hear about vaccinations. And so right now, based on, as you were aware, every week, we have an, all of superintendents meet with the DuPage County Health Department and get updates. I am very excited to share that educators are part of that 1B group. And we were asked Monday this week to start preparing our plans. District 86 is prepared to be a vaccination site and we are currently working, Josh and I have have had some calls with third parties, the health department, the federal government releases so many vaccinations to the Illinois Health Department, and then the Illinois Health Department releases them to each of the local health departments. As you've probably heard, in a multitude of states that has, that supply chain has been challenging on all sorts of levels and continues to be a challenge, the Health Department will share with us that really it's, they may be promised X, but only Y perhaps will show up. And so that that 1A is still happening. They will refer to it as trying to get to a substantial level and they are not yet at that substantial level of vaccinating all those that qualify for 1A. As was released this week, IDPH is putting together a website and that will be added to DuPage County COVID website, tracking the vaccinations in terms of how many doses have been received by the state and where we add an extra vaccination for round one and round two. And I think that will be helpful to have that metric to keep an eye on. But relative to us, I am somewhat of, in a good space. We have, Josh and I have one more call tomorrow. The Health Department, while they have, are the receivers and holders of that vaccination, they are not in a position in 1B alone. There are approximately 270,000 individuals who either work or live in DuPage County that meet the criteria for 1B and that is obviously would be quite an undertaking just for the Health Department, let alone it's not necessarily appropriate for, that our hospitals could, you know, assume that role either. And so we were asked to, attempting to figure that out, find a partner that would work with us. And so we have, we're working through an external vendor and I believe we'll have some good news as we work through that process. But as part of District 86 being that site, we would also be providing that vaccination opportunity for all of our feeders, schools. And then I had a couple of conversations with some village managers and perhaps we'll get broadening that opportunity here in using District 86. And so I'll have more information, but there is an opportunity that that could be happening here in early February, based on the county call. And it's really having the facility and the, that third party, and then there's an additional protocol that they have to go through to get approved for this particular vaccination. And so that has been, all things vaccination, the worst three days of my life. And so I think we're in a good space and we'll continue to update you on that. And therefore, it makes sense if we can get through these two rounds of vaccination, that we will be in a very good, great space for our employee group for the remainder of this semester. As I shared at the beginning of this presentation, we have not got any transmissions here at school, six feet in the mask works, and we have had a good kickoff to school. I watched the lunches over at Central on Tuesday, Dr. Cavano and Brad joined me as well. Kids were in a great space, they were happy to be there and, you know, things are going well. So any other questions that I can answer for you at this moment in time relative to our plan?
Are you moving on to the task force planning, the location, the surveillance and the live assistance?
I'm sorry, I was just to say that there's not a need for it at the moment if we're able to pursue the vaccination.
Got it. Okay, I didn't mean that to be the case. District 86 will be a community partner. You can take this as a political statement or not, but the reality is, at both the state and the federal level, the vaccination rollout is not going well in at least this board member's position. And if we have the opportunity at 86 to be a vaccination center for both our students, not students yet, but staff, as well as for feeder students, districts, we're going to take that opportunity. Anything we can do to be a community partner and accelerate that curve to the extent that it doesn't rise to the level of significant cost, and I don't believe that it will, we're going to do it. It makes sense for us to be in that position and provide whatever help we can to the community. At this point, we will move to 6.1, which is an At this point, we will move to 6.1, which is an action item. Administration has submitted a recommendation to award bid package 52 fire suppression systems to the two lowest bidders and 12 bidders for work at Hinsdale Central and Hinsdale South. A review of the bid proposals and scope of work was completed with each bidder. Chair will entertain a motion to award bid package 52 fire suppression systems work at Hinsdale Central to Automatic Fire Systems Inc. for an amount not to exceed $129,387, and work at Hinsdale South in Nelson Fire Protection for an amount not to exceed $108,390.
So moved, Hurstman.
Second. Motion, Hurstman, second by Turick. CFO Stevenson, do you have anything to ask?
I do not.
Hearing none, Madam Secretary.
Member Camden.
Aye.
Member Cheval.
Aye.
Member Hurstman.
Aye.
Member Edwards.
Aye.
Member Hansen.
Aye.
Member Hell.
Aye.
Member Turick.
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries seven zero, moving on to action item 6.2. As Phase Two projects have now been awarded, the board will vote on the project authorization, which updates the district's master agreement with Pepper Construction, authorizes them to complete work. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the project authorization for Pepper Construction for Phase Two projects, the amount of $49,528,759. Motion, Turick, second by Cheval. CFO Stevenson, any comments?
Just one comment. There is one bid package that was directly managed by the district for voltage. That was so that we could qualify for irate reimbursement. That should come back to the board in February, and we will have a change order for this project authorization once that has been awarded.
Regular, any board members have any questions? Madam Secretary.
Member Turick.
Aye.
Member Camden.
Aye.
Member Cheval.
Aye.
Member Hurstman.
Can't hear.
Remember calling my name?
Yes, Kathleen, do you vote in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor, I just couldn't hear my name being called.
Thank you.
Member Edwards.
Aye.
Member Hansen.
Aye.
Member Hell.
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries seven zero, moving on to committee reports. Report of the January HR committee was published in Board Docs. Committee Chair Hansen, do you have any additional comments to add to the report provided?
At this point, I do not.
Any board members have any questions about the report in public? Hearing none, we can move to consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items, minutes, business affairs, personnel policies, and administrative tasks that are routine in nature, or which have been discussed with the board at a prior meeting and are now presented for approval. Any item may be pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion and consideration. All items on the consent agenda are approved with a single motion unless removed before the roll call board. Does any board member wish to remove an item from consent? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved, Hurstman.
Motion, Hurstman, second, Cheval. Any discussion on this, folks? Good. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Member Hell.
Aye.
Member Turick.
Aye.
Member Camden.
Aye.
Member Cheval.
Aye.
Member Hurstman.
Aye.
Member Edwards. Member Hansen.
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries seven zero. We're now moving on to item 12 in the agenda, action items, approve policies on the second read. At the December regular action meeting, the policy committee submitted a recommendation to revise policy 6:300 graduation requirements, 6:310 high school credit for non-district experiences, course substitutions and reentering students, and 4:90 student activity with fiduciary funds in alignment with press spring 2020 legislative wrap-up and ISBE regulatory updates policy review. Committee further put forward a recommendation in coordinating with, in coordination with district legal counsel for administrative procedures supporting policy 2:240 board policy development. Procedures outlined the role that the board, the policy committee, the superintendent, the administration play in press policy updates, and rescinds exhibits of procedures from publication in a board policy manual. Policy manuals are now, pardon me, the policy updates are now presented for approval on second read. Does the board have any questions of policy revisions or administrative procedures presented, or do the policy committee members, and specifically the chair, have any additional comments?
No additional comments. I think it's probably pretty clear, we had a pretty robust explanation in our last meeting regarding each of these policies.
I appreciate your thoroughness at the last meeting, Kathleen brought us up to speed. Dr. Camino, do you have any comments regarding 6:300 or 6:310?
No, but I'd be willing to entertain a question.
Seeing no questions, CFO Stevenson, do you have any input regarding 4:90? I don't know. Seeing no board member questions. And finally, Superintendent Prentice, regarding admin procedure 2:240, any comments or questions?
Any questions?
Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve press revisions to policy 6:300, 6:310, 4:90, and adopt policy 2:240 administrative procedures.
So moved, Hurstman.
Second, Hansen.
Motion by Policy Committee Chairman Hurstman, second by board member Edwards. Any further discussion, board members? Hearing none, Madam Secretary.
Member Hansen.
Aye.
Member Hell.
Aye.
Member Turick. Member Camden.
Aye.
Member Cheval.
Aye.
Member Hurstman.
Aye.
Member Edwards.
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries seven zero. Briefly from my report, the question was raised in Selt yesterday, what are your hopes for the coming year and what are your fears? And fears we don't need to pile on, they're ever-present, everybody has their own demons to deal with. But with respect to hopes, my hope is that District 86 can continue to be a partner, both for the local educational community as well as the broader community. I'm proud of the board's work and the administration's work for what we've done over the last few years relative to being engaged in the community, particularly the educational community, as COVID has taken itself upon us, and I'm optimistic that will continue. With that, I will turn it over to Superintendent for her report.
Thank you. Just a couple really gratitude and thank yous. It was great to be back, and as I share, it's great to walk the halls again and see the students coming back. As I mentioned, Salt met this week, and that continues to be groundbreaking work, and it's completely served a platform for all the work that we continue with our strategic plan. And as board member Edwards shared, the students in that space are a very good reminder of why it is that we are all in the roles that we serve, and remember that we are to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all the students at District 86. In addition to that, if you recall last year, I had started the Superintendent's Roundtable thought group. That's approximately 22 teachers who are part of the AHSTA. We were doing a book reading, Happiness Advantage, last year, and we had met approximately six times, and then that thing came in March called the pandemic. So we, we got the band back together, as they say, in December, right before winter break, and reconvened, joined a few new members, and so we caught those members up, and we met again today. And so we have established monthly meetings again, and again, it's a wonderful opportunity to, one, we're continuing our book, we're back on Principal Five, and, and really an opportunity for me as a superintendent to listen in here in terms of opportunities of what's working well, and really hear from our teachers of some issues that they would like to work through that will continue to have them do the best that they can do here in the district. One of the particular principles in the book that struck me strongly last year, that I believe I even shared in this space, one of the principles talks it out, do you consider what is that you do for your employer, a job, a career, or a calling? And the author goes into great detail of what that means. He has quite a bit of research in all these different areas and taking perspective from whether you're in education, any kind of organization, it's not specific to educators. And at that particular meeting, we spent a long time in that space identifying, major District 86, what are the things that cause individuals to feel that, oh, it feels like a job, versus what does it feel like, what are the conditions, the working conditions when it feels like a career? And what we ascribe to be is to say, nope, it feels like a calling, and this is how it lands on me as a teacher when I feel like I'm in District 86 and it's a calling. So the real purpose of the Superintendent's Roundtable is we are continuing to learn some tools from this book of what we can apply as an individual. It's, I would say, part of the theme is you choose your attitude and you choose your approach. Work is hard, life is hard, nothing is perfect, and how you approach it from a problem-solving perspective will greatly impact how it is that you're viewing the situation that you're in. In particular, though, and it came up again today, as we continue to unpack and listen and problem-solve all these things, what is it that we can continue to do which is tied to goal three, to make this a calling for our staff and not consider it a job or a career? So I really, it's about, they give me two, two-plus hours of their time once a month, and I really do appreciate their time. We prefer it in person, but it's a pandemic, so we do it virtual. So I will see them again in March as we continue that work. And the other two shout-outs is our student leadership groups truly appreciated those opportunities when I was walking lunch at Central, checked in with students who are eating lunch to get their feedback, and as Chris Jess Colpa mentioned, we will continue that here second semester. So I've been able, many of those groups, leadership groups are meeting Zoom, so it's very easy for me to join regardless of the time that they need. And I, of course, am hearing from our student population. And last, I'm doing a shout-out to any board member or community member. We would love for people to volunteer for our lunches. We have the website up, we are looking for people to apply, so please, Tuesdays and Fridays, 10:45 to 1:00, and you can just do part of a lunch, and we will happily take you. So board members, if you're interested, or you have this date on your calendar, please let me know, and I will carry you with either by mail or through pronto, if you have a choice of which school. And in the community, it's on our main webpage, you are required by law to complete the application, and you need to do a quick background check, so that's why the application is there. But please, 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 consider volunteering, and we can take the time, the date that works for you, we would really appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you. And as is often the case, I typically have some thoughts after the Superintendent's report. I would echo Superintendent Prentice's thoughts regarding our staff and administration being, or rather approaching their service, because I don't look at it as a job, it's service to the district as a calling. This has been a disruptive year, I'm told by the folks that talk about such things. And I'm very proud of the staff and the administration for what we've been able to achieve to this point. I had the occasion to speak with another school board president from a neighboring district, and that board president was both amazed that we could finish the year in person as well as start the year on time, no delays, with the capacity that we have. And I think that's a testament to the administration and teachers and our support staff that people were committed to making sure students could be in the classroom. I have friends in neighboring districts that are frankly quite envious of the fact that we have the opportunity to have students in the classroom, and I hope that that continues. The numbers are not great, but they're getting better by way of statewide infection and other things, and it's certainly my hope, and it's certainly my action that we will keep students in the classroom as long as we can. With that, we will move on to the action item for administration in the resources, which is approve the MOU with the HTHSSSA for use of paid leave for quarantine COVID-related absences. The HH, HTHSSSA has proposed an MOU, which is lawyer's sign for memorandum of understanding, as the FICRA, because of course more lawyers are involved, Families First Coronavirus Response Act was not reinstated, or at least presently is not reinstated, that may change on or about January 20th. The MOU allows HTHSSSA members to access up to 10 paid administrative leave days before accessing their own sick leave if the employee is required to quarantine by the district or the local health department due to close contact that occurred during work hours while in person or due to testing positive. The administration recommends the board approve the MOU, chair will entertain a motion to approve the MOU with the HTSSSA for the use of paid leave for quarantine slash COVID-related absences as presented in public.
So moved, Hurstman.
Motion, Hurstman, second by Edwards. Interim HR Director Dudik, do you have any comments regarding this?
No additional comments.
So while within the confines of the Open Meetings Act, one board member contacted me regarding this, does that board member have any questions regarding the MOU?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
If I could understand it, maybe there's a draft in issue, or it could be in my head. So can somebody explain under what conditions, well, actually, we, under the reasons, I guess. It's my impression from reading this that if an employee, it doesn't matter where an employee might contract, what's the word?
Contract.
Contract.
Contract. Thank you. Contract. COVID, that they're entitled to the additional leave days as opposed to it being limited to those contracted while working for the district. Is that correct, my understanding?
So the, the understanding for the memorandum is that there's just 10, these 10 days that would be available. It, the reasons are pretty open, correct?
So this doesn't sit right with me. It almost seems that we're incentivizing, certainly not incentivizing, careful behavior outside of, it makes sense, I could get it, if a teacher comes to school, comes to the building and gets COVID at the building.
Well, part of the conditions is that the person needs to be working in person in their district.
Yeah, I think to Keith's point, or Board Member Schloss's point, I think it's poorly drafted because there's some confusion as to how it occurs. I, and I won't speak for Board Member Cheval, he's certainly more than capable, but as I read it, it's focused on work-related contraction and work-related quarantines, but I think there's a fair interpretation question, as Board Member Cheval raises, if somebody's engaging in reckless conduct outside of the workplace, are we saying you get 10 additional paid sick days?
Yeah, that's not necessarily the way we do it work. It's difficult to prove sometimes, you know, but it's certainly, the goal is certainly there, so that the employees that do take the leave instead of come to work sick.
Right, I don't, we don't want to penalize people and encourage them to come to work sick or not report, and conversely, we don't want to suggest, as Keith says, that, you know, we're incentivizing them not to pay attention to the protocols. It's just a little bit hard to understand the way that it's drafted. And the reality is, I don't see this coming into play, because as has been demonstrated as Superintendent Prentice referenced earlier, schools have not been documented throughout the course of the pandemic as, the word escapes me, outbreak sites or waves of people to commute, or contracting the disease. So I guess my question, piggybacking on what Board Member Cheval says, is somebody comes to the administration and says, I have to be COVID quarantined, maybe the question is, what's the questioning to the extent that we can do so to figure out how this occurred?
Yeah, so the, it is, it is a little, I think the wording is difficult, I agree with you. I think, for example, if we were a remote, like earlier when we were remote last week, none of this, this wouldn't have applied, nobody was here at work. But when they are at work and there's a student that is, for some reason, a staff member's defamed, a close contact within six feet, and we tell them they have to go home and quarantine, this would apply.
Okay, so as the lawyers like to say, a condition precedent for this is that they're actually here in the workplace, and then they have to be quarantined.
Or they're, or they're working, they've been mandated by a health department, they have been working in person, and they've been mandated by a health department. So there's, again, there are, there are some conditions there that are maybe not related to work, but the second bullet in the, in the MOU mandating by a doctor or health department to quarantine is important because we are worried, we want to ensure as much as possible that people stay home when they're sick. And that, there are, you know, this, this employee group has, you know, the least amount of leave available, a lot of them are not, you know, they're short, they have been hired more recently, they don't have a lot of leave buildup, buildup on their own, and taking any other leave time is, could be a very big hardship. So not saying that they would choose to come to work sick, but we.
No, but I would suggest that it's the case, the board is very appreciative of the support staff and what they've done, both through the summer as well as through the fall semester. We're just trying to understand that, what is that we're talking about here?
Do we have any sense of, I guess I'd say, in particular in the private sector, what the practices are as far as this goes?
I know that, that the private sector has, it's just like us, they have opportunities to decide what to do or not do. I think there are some tax credits available for the private sector as opposed to the school districts. I have, I'm kind of, you know, just like Josh, I'm watch for that as. I am, I'm kind of, you know, just like Josh, trying to watch for that, is there any, any opportunity for us to be able to benefit because we are providing this support for our staff? I, I think there's a question out there that that could happen, I just haven't seen it yet.
Okay, this is Kathleen, I just want to weigh in real quickly. I am, I am completely in favor of this. I don't anticipate that we have employees who are going to try and game the system. This, this agreement is designed to protect our employees as well as protect other people who may come in contact with our employees and I, any, any inconsistencies or ambiguities in the drafting, I think are by far outweighed by the policy considerations that are driving this agreement and I'm fully in favor. And if there's, if there are people who are gaming the system, we'll deal with those on an individual basis, but I don't think we're going to have that, I just don't think we're going to have that.
It's my belief that we haven't seen that, Board Member Hersman, up to this point, and I would be surprised if that were in fact the case, but I'd like to hear from the HR Committee Chair Hanson with respect to this. I believe this came through HR, yes?
Um, actually, no, it's not, it's not in the last meetings.
Does HR have any concerns, either the Board Member Cheval, Board Chair Hanson with respect to the MOU?
I don't, I know, hadn't followed the, the FICRA and knowing that it wasn't going to be reinstated and understanding like the, the quarantine requirements and knowing how that plays out and I think that it would be a benefit for our system as a whole to be able to allow employees to stay, to stay home if they are close contact or if they need to, rather than have to make the difficult decision of coming in under those circumstances. So I'm in favor of it as well.
I do have problems about it. And I, and I understand I'd be treading, treading on thin ice or sacred ground here and I don't intend to do that or cast aspersions, but you know, when I, when you see some of the hard, put it on some, how much hardship has been suffered by so many people, losing jobs, losing businesses, not being able to go into work because of COVID and all that. I, I think that it, it, it creates a possibility of some legitimate questions about the benefits that are being extended. And then there are sick days, EM leave days, and I don't understand exactly, you know, the package there and, you know, for individuals, how many of account, have accumulated what or not. And perhaps it'd make more sense that you use those before you, and then there's 10 days or there's days that are available once those are used. And I, and I would certainly anticipate the honor of staff that would not come in if they suspected or knew they were, in fact, that I, I'd certainly hope that that, I'd be disappointed or shocked if teachers were to come in knowing that they're.
Just to interrupt, this is not for the teachers, this is for our support.
Of course not.
This is special healthcare professionals and so is the other collective bargaining agreement.
Oh.
It's not, it's not.
I think it should also be noted that the teachers have opportunity to work remotely when, and they have an MOU as well, but they have opportunity to work remotely when they're sick much more than this group.
I got it, I got it.
So it sets up a little bit of an unfair playing field. And it's not for family members, probably.
Rewind, check my apologies and thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, the, the support professionals have been outstanding throughout. I have every confidence and no hesitation to move forward with this because I don't think it's going to be used if there were a class of employees in the district that would, I think, say, no, I'm not going to come in because of my close contact with a student, I think it would be this group. That's not to suggest that there's any ill motives with any other employees in the district, but I think the support staff have particularly close relations with the students that they support. So barring any further discussion, can we call the question?
I erased my problems and I think I got lost in how many S's were in there.
Yeah, there are a lot.
I thought you were just stuttering.
Three S's. Hearing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
I would just like to clarify before I take the vote that you said S presented in public and the MOU is not in public. I believe it will be posted in public when the board votes.
I apologize, I may have misread the script, so I will, would somebody make the friendly amendment to the motion to strike the in public part?
So moved.
Well, who was the, see, we gotta go into the bowels of parliamentary procedure now. Who was the motion maker?
Hersman and the second by Edwards.
Board Member Hersman, would you accept that friendly amendment to strike the as presented in public?
Certainly.
Thank you. And Board Member Edwards, as the second, would you accept that?
Yes.
I think we've now satisfied all parliamentary conditions, we clarified the motion, and now our dutiful recording secretary can call the roll, please.
Member Edwards.
Aye.
Member Hanson?
Aye.
Member Held?
Aye.
Member Turek?
Aye.
Member Camden?
Aye.
Member Cheval?
Aye.
Member Hersman?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you all, board members, for your comments. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you for, I want to be clear here, HTHSSSA members for your continued support and commitment to the district, it does not go unnoticed by the board. At this point, we'll move on to 15.2, 2021 Benefits Open Enrollment Report. I'm encouraged that Interim HR Director Dudak will give us an exposition on benefits and open enrollment, but I would suggest that we simply focus on the benefits open enrollment for District 86, teachers, administration, IT, buildings and grounds, non-union support, security, paras, and student safety, which ran from November 13 to November 23. The administration is now presenting their annual report, benefits enrollment by plan and percentage stat. Interim HR Director Dudak.
So really, the, if you have a chance to look at the open enrollment tally, just a summary on the open enrollment, the, it, this, for this particular year, the 2021 enrollment reflects a higher number of employees, waiting insurance in all categories, just slightly higher. These are just some summary bullet points. For teachers, there was a slight decline for single HMO and a similar level of incline for single PPL. So I think it went down a little last year, went up a little this year, if I'm understanding. And then for the paras, student safety group, we are seeing a slight decline across most categories with the most notable decline in the family coverage areas in that group. The summary of your report reflects all of the numbers.
We had a substantial increase last year, Josh, in the HMO costs, which was a peculiar circumstance where we actually were moving folks from PPO to HMO and then kind of get bit with increased costs. Have we had any discussion yet with respect to what the benefit cost will be in the upcoming year?
So the, the benefit costs are known for the calendar year 2021, this is the open enrollment period. 22 benefits wouldn't be known until the fall of 21. So the, around that, that September timeframe when we would, we would have been to go over rates. And, you know, there was a, there was some movement between the plans, you know, this year, looking at 20 to 21, I, you know, other than the, the uptick in individual waiting, I don't think there's still any payments that we're considering.
Okay, well, that's good to know because it was sort of a disruptive event when we saw the HMO increases, so. Any further discussion, the board? Okay, we can move on to the always scintillating PTAL update. The U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics published a CPI, the Consumer Price Index, on a monthly schedule for the previous month. CFO Stevenson will now report on the 2020 PTAL or the property tax extension limitation block.
So the final PTAL for 2020 was 1.4%. Just going back in time, like six, seven, seven months ago, I think we were looking at negative or zero numbers there. So I think it's better than we were anticipating. It's not a great number, but I think it's much better than, than we were expecting not too long ago.
Yeah, you and I had an unbelievable amount of discussion regarding this and I would have been surprised had it come in under one, let alone coming negative as a number started rolling. Next year may be a horse of a different color, as the saying goes, but we shall see. Any board members have any questions to CFO Stevenson on this?
First, I have a question and I, I can never do this enough because I don't remember. Josh, would you explain what this number means with regard to this year, next year, to what year is this going to apply? You could just remind us on how this works.
So the 2020 PTAL number will revisit this late fall, winter, next year as we, we work on the 2021 levy. So this is what will be used in the 2021 levy process. For taxpayers, this would impact their 2022 taxes and for the districts, the funds received would be in fiscal year 2023.
So the 1.4 would apply to our receiving taxes in 2023. I'm sorry, wait a second, that would be what tax year? It's the 2022 tax year, but we would be receiving that revenue in 2023.
We count for those tax receipts in fiscal year 23. So starting, starting July 1st of '22 through June.
Right, fiscal year, FY 2023.
Correct.
Yeah, I, at the risk of complicating this even further, because we bill taxes a year in arrears in Illinois, we have the PTAL number for tax bills which are going to come out not next year being 2021 if we're looking, or 20, yeah, 2021, but actually in 2022. So we're a full year behind and that's the concern with respect to budgeting and collective bargaining agreements and other things. The PTAL number gets locked down long before we start receiving tax revenues and we're subjected to that for the following tax year. So it's, it's daunting in the sense that when we have an economic downturn, those, our, our tax revenues are limited even if the economy is improving because the Illinois Department of Revenue establishes this number as it did and so. If you want to know more about PTAL, I found that Josh is an authoritative source and we would love to talk with you more about it at another time.
I, oh, I have had this conversation with Josh many times, it just doesn't stick, but I was just thinking it might be helpful for our community who might be listening as a quick little reminder, okay, so what year does this apply to? I'm not asking for a long discourse on it, but.
Oh, it's fascinating. And I presented professionally on this, so I'm more than happy to meet with you.
No, no.
But I suspect that the, the, the community writ large, as well as Josh, who's shooting daggers at me presently, is not particularly interested in. The point is, we're essentially chasing revenue. We're a year behind on tax receipts based upon what PTAL was. And depending upon how things are rolling in the present circumstance, you know, depending upon whether you're half-full or half-empty glass type person, the next couple of years are going to be interesting because we will be a full year behind what we're assigned by PTAL limitations and how much we can flex in tax revenues.
Then you have more than answered my question.
Well, I think that's the first time you've ever told me that, Board Member Hersman. I appreciate that.
I don't think that, maybe.
It's starting to move along. Yeah, I think that's what I'm hearing, Board Member Cheval's kicking my shins. At this point, we've addressed audience communication. I see no new audience persons here unless I'm missing something, and they are here to speak now or forever hold your peace. Hearing nothing, are there any board members that wish to comment on anything they've heard tonight or haven't otherwise addressed? Good, hearing none. Any board members wish to add future agenda items? I might suggest you start looking at like May or June at this point post-election, but feel free to add anything on.
Actually, you have something.
Of course, Board Member Held.
There we go. No, this is actually continuing, so in, I know we, we had the, the conversation about, the community has asked, why are we focusing on curriculum in the middle of a pandemic? And we said, well, the operating, the business of running a school doesn't stop and improving ourselves and doing those, doing those things. Now, looking back a year ago now, just before everything imploded with the pandemic, we as a board were, there was a, there were conversations being had with respect to OMA about engaging more with the community, which certainly has been a difficult thing in the course of the last year. There haven't been any face-to-face board member coffees. You know, they haven't, we haven't even broached the conversation, the topic of, you know, those semi-annual town hall board meetings that are just for the express purpose of having that dialogue created between the community members and between the, the board members instead of kind of the, the back and forth speeches that we give here during audience communication. And not at the next board meeting, potentially, you know, looking a little bit further down the road, doing some, you know, work behind the scenes, you know, talking maybe to Chris and Tammy, figure out what we can do, but I'd like to try to restart that conversation here in public at the board level to determine some sort of, to Keith's point, when talking about goal four, you know, that communication piece. You know, how do we make sure that we're being as, as transparent with the public and giving them the opportunity for that dialogue that is, I think, really sought after within our community? We have a very engaged community, which, you know, maybe we can find that a double inch sword, but that really, I think, is, is a great thing to have because we have, we have taxpayers that are paying attention to, to the numbers. We have parents that are getting into the weeds on, on curriculum change and I think that's, it's great that they're showing that passion. And one of the, the things, Lisa, I, I've heard is that they'd like other ways to, you know, dialogue. You know, maybe we'll have the ability to do more in-person stuff as the year rolls on, but I'd like to try and lay the groundwork for that in a future board meeting. Again, this can be.
It would need to be, we're in tier two, that would be opportunities for the board because then the public allotment changes because right now the law is 10. So if we go to tier two, it would change the number, it would increase and so there may be some things we need to think about. So definitely as the mitigation strategies, when we drop down, that's certainly something the board can discuss and certainly we did in the past, we kind of had a framework ready to go and the pandemic came, so it's up to them, we can't pull that out, we just need to be in tier two to pull that out.
Yeah, but I just wanted to bring that back up since we're, I'm, we're close to the one year anniversary thing. You and I had a phone call when I was in St. Louis airport, I'm like, I just see a few people wearing masks here as I was coming back from a, from a meeting, giving you my good dates for those coffees, so.
I, I support the community engagement. It's because of the volume of business that needs to be conducted twice monthly by the board, it's just not an optimal format for back and forth questioning. I think there are other ways to approach that depending upon how long our little disruption lasts, we may need to engage in Zoom or other things, but I think it's important. But I also think more fundamentally, your initial point with respect to why is the district still moving forward with respect to the strategic plan, because the reality is, it's necessary and it has to be. We're not pausing everything that we're doing simply because of COVID. And if you listen, you know, for those of you that are at home, if you listen to the progress that we're making, it's significant and it needs to continue. This is a law, it's a five-year plan, right, as it's identified, so that's significant. Any other board members have future agenda items or suggestions? Hearing none, Chair would return and the recording secretary demands that we vote on it.
So Hersman.
Second.
Board.